All right, then you all please stand over to the other page.
The President of the United States of America and to the Republic for Digital Innovation, Under our Individual of Liberty and Justice Law.
Next on our agenda is a public comments and questions on Agenda Business. Please, if anybody who is attending remotely has a comment or question, please raise your hand. I'll just remind everybody that our participation in public comments that are going to keep things running smoothly is limited to three minutes. And we appreciate your recognition of that rule. We're gonna see if we have anybody.
We do not have anyone.
Right. Our next item of business is our VHS Student Council Report.
Hi Ella, I'm Macy, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
This screen shared real quick.
And here you are Ella Macy. Hold on just a second. Is that it? Ella try and say something.
Uh, hi guys, hope you can hear me.
Ella?
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello?
Now we hear you.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Sorry about that.
Oh no, all good. All right, and Macy's gonna kick things off today.
All right, so for Student Council, some things we've been working on are, as of right now, we're working on a fundraiser where we're selling these masks that we had like the little bee put on from Paramount and we're gonna sell those to the student body as well as the staff. And then another thing would be Star Awards, which is just like a thing to recognize those like students of the senior class that have like done something like we do like categories like most likely to be and then the next like Crest commercial or like um, next SoundCloud so somebody that like sings. And then another thing is that um, the tables for the courtyard that have been made by the woodshop class and now we are having them painted by our art students. Um, at the school, we, as of today, we headed into the fourth quarter. Um, AP exams are gonna be starting up in May. For all of those kids that are taking the advanced placement classes and then spring sports have been playing their matches and been getting COVID tested on Sundays. Um, June 6th is the graduation days for our seniors as of right now, so that's something to look forward to. And then last week, the juniors took the SAT. So that was successful and everybody else took the PSAT. And then starting tomorrow, we'll have the M step for those um, students as well.
Um, so about senior stuff that's happening, the seniors' last day is coming up for May 20th. Our graduation rehearsal, senior breakfast, prom and senior walk are all gonna be on June 3rd. Um, and we are in the process of planning prom. Um, and then our graduation is June 6th. And something that happened recently is senior parents ordered signs for all of the seniors that are um, out by the driveway of the school. And they ordered gift bags for us and the cup pictured here was included in the gift bags. And then we'd also like to talk to you guys about cords. Um, I know Macy spoke about cords for graduation at the last meeting. But uh, Mr. Stevens met with some staff about um, which cords will be permitted for graduation and they decided that um, they would like any academic cords such as Spanish National Honor Society, Student Council, Link Crew, Yearbook, Band, Honors Cords, STEM Cords and National Honor Society Cords to be allowed at graduation. So we hope that you guys can consider that and hopefully come to a decision. And that is all that we have for you guys today.
Any questions with our students? Thank you ladies, very well done as always. We appreciate the information and
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next on our agenda is our Superintendent Support.
Well, thank you. First, I'd like to say we're in the current project position of 14,000, 11,000, 11,000. We currently have 14,000, 11,000, 11,000. We do have zero cost, but we have to get the time. And we do have 46,000, 11,000, 11,000. Just like parents with a region of Africa, we have 23,500, so we have 14,000. We have 10,000, 51,000.
Does anybody have any questions? On the board of thirty?
Thank you all the work, on you and the staff and everything that's been through it. If you say we've been able to stay up, I don't think we've been able to stay negative. And I think you're all just fine, if our students stay consistent, thank you.
Appreciation goes out to our, everybody of course, but something new in our process of course is the testing. And coming off of spring break and having to hit the ground running on that Monday with the testing procedures, organizing it, understanding the proper procedures to make sure that you go through it, it's compliant. Um, and then moving forward through the weekend, the weekly Sunday testing, Chris and many other administrators, staff, volunteers, it's taken a lot more than people may realize at first blush, not that we wouldn't consider it, but it's taken a lot. It's really, it's quite an undertaking. So I echo the sentiment, but I really wanna give a shout out to everybody who's involved in that initiative because obviously, again, it's something new to our year and have to, you know, we'd like this responsibly. Lots of compliance matters, lots of details. So thank you to everybody who's involved, from volunteers all the way to Chris and everyone else in the central office for supporting that. Thank you.
The, and then I point out that you were around the five of the central following. Recommend them having a special meeting on May 3rd. To continue this during the gift to the student and the qualification and judges, which should be an action I would rather boil than do. The process is to maybe, you know, instructing managers, you know, on the major and potential improvement at the May 17th regular meeting. Those two entities help us along the way to establish a student and qualification so we can get a trophy. So that would be a part of the May 3rd meeting, along with strategies of communication with the parents ongoing. And refining and looking at the bond space. So, May 3rd will be the reason, a lot of work to do and preparation for central following.
And towards that, excuse me. I wanted to give a shout out to our employees' needs or to being a closer look at our needs, if we can try and really investigate that and see firsthand, very much appreciated by the board, by the community, everyone, and that is really going to help inform the state, the government, you know, in terms in terms of detail, really things that during the May 3rd meeting, like that can be so thank you, very much appreciated.
Awesome.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda, the following is number seven, item seven, approval of the concerned agenda. And have a motion, who did the random board of education approve the concerned agenda here? Discussion? Can we have a voice call on?
What's the part, yes? Rebecca Haines?
Yeah.
Brian Selter?
Yeah.
Beverly Smith Collada?
Yes.
Claire Sepaskey?
Yeah.
Beth Silky?
Yeah.
Just kind of run.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Our next item is information and discussion items. First, as far as the Board of Education reports from ours, I'll just provide a little insight that one of the reasons we decided initially we were going to possibly incorporate the bond discussions, not meeting, was that that will be more lengthy meeting because we really wanna jump in.
And now we can move on to the finance report.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
The first thing on the agenda is to discuss our funding. As you know, you did approve the resolution to refund the school bond loan fund. We had some information a couple of weeks ago that was to our benefit to explore not only refunding the school bond loan fund, but to refund a portion of the 2016 refunder, which was originally the 2006 bond. By doing this, we can increase our bonding capacity a little over 5 million, which is without, still as they know, you know, increased, so that's good news. There's really no downside to doing this. It's, we're just combining to, now our bond issue is going to be not to exceed about 53 million. We think it'll be a little bit less than that, but that the resolution states of 53, 53.5 million. We will have the same timeline as we had prior. And so basically, it's, there's just, there's no downside, this is a good thing for us. There any questions on that?
Interesting question. It seems like when going on this, is it once a year? How, or is it just as things happen? Like we do this four or five times a year, I mean.
Well, we've done a few of them, yeah.
Fair question, yeah.
Yeah, we have the, well, a few years ago, we were, we had the ability to do this like every nine years. So we have the 1996 bond here that was refunded in 2008 and then we did it in 2018. So there was a cycle, we're now refunding and refunding. So that's where we're at. This particular one with the 2016 refunding, the rules changed, I think in like 2017. Why he didn't discuss it or RJ didn't bring it up with us when we were talking about refunding the school bond loan fund. He just, he just didn't. So when he realized that these bonds were callable and a portion of them, again, the rules had changed. We immediately jumped on the opportunity to discuss this with the board. And so we have done a lot of them, primarily the reason is interest rates have gone down. So they're lower this year than they were last year and the year before. And so every time we've done a refunder, we saved money. With this one, we're looking at a savings of about, over the last several years, over $10 million to the taxpayers. So that's substantial, yeah, that's all of the refunding combined. This particular one, just by adding the 2016 refunding, we're saving about 2 million, 2.2 million. So this is all just in the interest of saving, saving taxpayer money.
So how do we get that message out there? Cause that's a big one, I think.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure we'll discuss it in our community forums, but.
Yeah, yeah, I think we can get that message out there, we can write a press release. If there's a writing advantage we could take with that. The original refunding that was approved with the resolution before was to save around 800,000 to 1 million dollars. So combining this with the advanced refunding, now we're at 2.2 million dollars. So market conditions are favorable for Brandon to do this. And it's something that we should let the taxpayers know.
I think, yes, I, I agree 100%, it's exactly a on point question because I think historically, preceding my time on the board, but particularly during my time, I think the, the board, along with Jan's fantastic help in identifying opportunities, has taken advantage of these opportunities, it's proactive approach to, you know, the getting a decrease and taking a veiling school that opportunity in the community. So I think that it's this moment in time that we're, you know, taking on this resolution and considering it. But I also think there's value in visiting the schools' efforts overall to pay attention and that we, we care proactively. We, we care what this, you know, financing arm of our school, the most, one of the most important, important features looks like. So I, I think we need to focus on some next steps in response to Ken's question.
If you have any ideas or like work, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe part of the yes committee will know stuff.
I'm sure it will be, yeah, I'm sure, but I think, I agree 100%. A lot of the yes committee work, as I understand, the, you know, project management timeline that we'll most likely be tracking. Perhaps we want to get the message out a little bit earlier than what the activity there might, might be. Great idea, I love it.
It all ties together, but it really is about augmenting that yes committee with some of the great things that you've been on top of for, I mean, your entire time.
Forever, yeah.
So, and, and I genuinely say that, so, I mean, it's part of the big picture, so.
And this is not news to sit on.
Yeah, right.
Not news to sit on and wait. It's, shout it out right now, yeah.
All right, very good.
Agreed.
Very good. Does everybody have any questions before we move on to the next topic under Jan's report? Does anybody have anything you'd like to discuss on that line item? Just to make sure we're.
No, I'm, okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item that I'd like to discuss tonight are ESR funds. I think you're all aware of, it's in the news, we have three different series of ESR funds. So I wanted to kind of put it together and give you an overview, I'll add some details. ESR funds, what it means to us from the financial perspective, which is all financial, but, so. This. Look here, there it is. Okay, so ESR 1, we received 190,356. That was approved last spring. That money was used for technology purchases, hotspots, everything technology related. We've spent all that money. ESR 2 was passed, I believe in December. And that funding primarily, we're planning to use it for budget shortfalls, which encompasses a lot of things. Our balance is 862,441. We have not spent any of that money. We're in the process of applying to get approval to spend some of that money, but to date, we have not. ESR 3 is the newest one, passed a few weeks ago. And that's the biggest one. Our allocation is 1,009, 1,00936, 920. And again, we're primarily looking to use that for the next two or three years to cover budget shortfalls. A, one thing of note with the ESR 3 is that 20% of that allocation, or 387,384, must be used for learning loss through evidence-based interventions such as summer learning, summer enrichment, extended day after school or extended school year programs. Again, we have not even applied for that money. So our total ESR funding, funding from the government, 2,989, just shy of 3 million dollars. So these next few screens, I, I found these and I thought they were really kind of to put this whole ESR in context. Which of the following is not an allowable use of ESR funds? We're allowed to enlarge a gym, reinstate a pay raise, pay the key for vendors, pay for staff positions that would otherwise be cut due to enrollment declines, replenish the reserve fund. So the government, federal government does not want us to use this money and just kind of build up our, our savings, so to speak. They want it to be used proactively. And we can also use it to supply COVID tests. Okay, this one's a big one. For those of us that were in school finance after the ARRA or during the ARRA time, we know what happened. We got this ARRA money that was back in 2009, 2010, and then the money ran out and we took a $470 per people pay cut. So we're trying to avoid what is referred to as a funding cliff. So the federal dollars enables districts to maintain a cost structure, but this money is going to run out. Funding cliffs are typical when federal relief stops, and we saw that again during ARRA. And then in the right there, this is kind of what we're, Carl and I discussed this. We want to pace ourselves and plan ahead for when federal money, so we wanna plan the next three or four years. We know this money, most likely is not going to continue. That's just kind of putting it in perspective. So this is a, what they call the tricky balance. Do we spend now to address learning loss, which we do need to do some of that, versus case spending to avert a fiscal cliff, which is what we saw years ago. And then this is, you know, just a suggestion, how much, what percentage do we wanna spend next year, the year after, and the year after that? And we are working on all of these questions. Beware of added recurring costs, this again is a big one. Instead of recurring expenses, which would be things like new hires, base pay raises, increased benefits, permanent calendar changes, changes to class sizes. Consider one-time expenses like stipends, contractors, one-time hazard pay, facility upgrades, summer school, temporarily added weeks of school. So the goal would be to bring things in that when the funding leaves, we may not be able to afford. And then just general ESR spending considerations, that these are all separate awards, we have to track them separate. They're being treated much like Title I, so they're restricted funds, we have to apply for them, how we're gonna spend them. And then once we spend them, I'll turn in for reimbursement to get, to get the money back. They have to be what might be necessary and reasonable in one circumstance, might not be in another. So there's, it's, they're being treated much like Title I, which we're very familiar with. They can be spent on the same activities. Use of funds are very broad under all of the ESR programs. Again, that's really important, so we're not tied in to having to spend it on one area. In a minute, I'll show you some, some different areas. So we do have a lot of leeway on with the allowable use. But for our budget, we're gonna have to probably go one direction a little bit more. So let's talk about allowable uses. We can pay for additional staff to address recruitment retention challenges. We can pay for transportation for, if we, if we chose to, again, these are all options, to increase social distancing. We can pay for instructional curriculum materials with this money. Evidence-based reading curriculum to address learning loss. We can pay for MTSS materials. Again, academic recovery to address learning loss, that would be like the summer programs, extended day after school, before school programs. We can pay for school facilities and infrastructure costs. We've done some, we purchased our PPE, but we could, if there was some great HVAC system upgrade, we would be allowed to do that with this money. We can, and this is where it gets real general, providing principals and other school leaders with the resources necessary to address the needs of individual schools. Well, that's a really subjective category there. So we're kind of, when Carly and I were working on this last week, we had to apply for some of this money. We kind of put some things in that category and made sense. Mental health warning systems and counseling for students and staff. I think we all know that that's a big, big talking point is the mental health. Purchasing educational technology. And then again, addressing learning loss among students, including low-income students, or at-risk students. Purchasing our supplies to clean the facilities. We used, we used some state money this year, that additional state money to do that, repairs and improvements. And then this last one is really truly our catch-all. Other activities that are necessary to maintain the operation of and continuity of services in local educational agencies. So that one is catch-all. Budgetary shortfalls, I put this in here because we'll be talking more about that in the next month and in June, when the budget is presented to you. We're gonna plug our short, we're gonna use some of this money to plug, to balance our budget. And the education department says that ESR funds may be used to bridge budget shortfalls if the deficit is related to the coronavirus and the ESR funds are needed for education-related expenses. So it just talks about, you know, we're basically, basically, we can use this to plug our, balance our budget. And then this last one, I thought was good, I don't know that they had this in ARRA. This is just maintenance of effort, the saying that the state cannot reduce our funding. They have to fund us at the levels like for fiscal year '22 next year. States must, this is the middle one, states must spend the same proportion of their state budgets on education as they did on average in 17, 18, 19. So this is saying the state can't, you know, oh, well, the district's got money from the federal government, so we're gonna, you know, cut them or whatever, which is good. Hopefully this will continue past the years when this funding runs out. We're just, we don't want another funding cliff, more risk in three years, states run out of money. So that's kind of an overview of ESR, questions?
I have a couple. Within the each tranche of funds, there's no required allocation percentage within that based on the purposes, right? You could throw all of the money at one category, we don't have, we're not confined that way.
Correct, correct. And ESR 3 expires, we have to spend by September of '24, ESR 2 is September of '23. So we probably will go ahead and spend ESR 2 first.
Right.
And then, then ESR 3. But we're still working on the budget, like I said, we'll talk more next month and for sure in June. Coming up with what our number will be. How much of the ESR money are we going to need for next year, Brandon?
We can go from there.
And ESR 3, there's a certain percentage we are required to use for learning loss.
Learning loss, a 20%. Almost 400,000, 300,000.
Thank you, yeah, other, other than that, actually, yeah, Ella, I thank you very much. And then my other question was, I had heard timing by which deadlines, you know, each 1, 2, and 3 had to be spent by, so you just answered that.
Yeah, yeah. And we are currently, we just applied for, well, this week we'll be applying for 43%. The governor did release 43% of ESR 2, the rest of it's coming. So we're working on that, keeping the categories real general, we don't want to box ourselves in. And then we're also applying for the 23B, but Carly's gonna talk about that as well for summer school. So that's ESR, we're gonna be, you're gonna be hearing more about that.
Thank you for putting the thought into, you know, the clips avoiding.
Well, that's a big one, that's a big one.
I think we want a glide path downward, right?
No cliffs.
Yeah, we don't want it. And then my last topic tonight is our DM Ber contract. I think much of everyone knows the new board members. The district voted, I believe in 2011, 12, it was right before I got here, to contract with DM Ber. So we've had them for now 10, 12 years. Every two years, we do a contract addendum. So the current contract addendum, I believe it was in the board packets. It would be, actually, it's going to be a decrease in the current contract. This year, we did, we added five extra custodians. Through lots of discussions, it was decided that the touch point cleaning can be done in other ways and. And the money we were paying for the five custodians was one of the things that we decided and recommending that we don't keep all five of them. So we're going to give the, this current contract gives the current custodians a raise, which they haven't had in two years. They don't get one every year. Makes us comparable to surrounding districts. We looked at Holly and Davidson and, you know, Lake Orion. So our wages are comparable, maybe even still slightly lower. We're going to do that. And then we will still see a budget savings with this contract of $133,916. And that is mainly because we're reducing the number of custodians we have. And that was through a lot of input really throughout. We know so much more about COVID and kids know, and it really is airborne. Yeah, not that that wasn't valuable, but of course, it did cost us, cost us quite a bit. So that's the D M BUR, it is a two-year extension. Any questions on that D M BUR contract?
If we found the need to increase the personnel again, I'm assuming the contract has that ability with their.
Yeah, we were doing the addendum and then add like we did last summer. We or chose to add the five custodians. I think we did that last July.
Right. So nothing has changed. Our capability is retained.
We would come to the board and give a board action to add that addendum from X cost, whatever it was. And then on D M BUR would tie those to us.
Does anybody have any other questions regarding that line item? Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Now we are moving on to H C, which is our education report with Carly Stone.
All right, so in a typical fashion, we're going to talk about what we've accomplished, what we're working on and what we're looking forward to. Luckily, Macy and Ella shared some of this for us earlier, which I very much so appreciate. But last month was March. We had a ton of really fun. March is reading month celebrations. We had the drive-through book fair that County Bab put together at the ITech Center. And my boys and I drove through there and picked up some great stuff. And Clifford was there and all. Some really great celebrations from the schools with activities for students to do at home as well. We had a district-wide professional learning day at the end of March. That was really exciting. It was a day in which teachers could choose their path of professional learning. We had a few mandatory items because of the required state testing that we had to put into place. But then they also had a chance to pick from the menu of choices that best fit their individual needs as going as professionals. So really excited about that. And staff really, the feedback from that was very positive. We launched our Brandon Teaching and Learning Committee, B T L C. I've spoken previously about the Curriculum Council and having a chance to re-launch that. So we Brandonized it a little bit and did B T L C and not B L T. So that was really a lot of fun. So we used some time on professional learning data and sure that we could maximize the amount of people who wanted to be there, who would be available to participate. And so we had just about 30 staff members participate in that meeting. They got a chance to share where they believe our areas of strength are in curriculum and instruction as a district, areas of opportunity for us. And then also talking about our professional development plan for next year as well. So that was a lot of fun. I've already been in touch with a few of them for different reasons. In fact, I've got a meeting with our literacy team tomorrow morning. So pretty excited about that. It was a great meeting. I'm very thankful for the staff that participated. Again, Macy and Ella kind of took this one for us. But for us, launching M Stop and S A T and P S A T this week this year, that was like big stuff. So you talk about kudos to a lot of folks. This is a great place to add some kudos. I know that our staff at high school just worked tirelessly. Diane, Zidane and her crew with all the accommodations and such. It's been, it's a mountain every year. And this year it was just tremendous and we got to the top of it.
Carly, was it helpful to have it the second week after spring break? Was that really a relief?
Yes.
First.
Yes. So I know it was just nice for folks to get to connect the week prior. It's very high anxiety. You guys know there's a lot that goes into it. There's really thick manuals and procedures and protocols. We did really thoughtful too. And it gave us a chance to kind of catch our breath a little bit. My kids came back from break. And so we're actually quite thankful as to how that felt, particularly this year.
Right. Sorry for the interruption.
No, no problem. And so, yeah, fifth and eighth graders are taking M Stop. Our eighth graders are done. Our fifth graders are in the midst of it right now. They're in a window. They have, actually, they've extended a window now till midday in response to all those folks that are remote learners. But we are chugging away. We are planning to be done ahead of time in that case. So, yeah, and the ladies also said earlier that the end of the third quarter was last week. It's just amazing to me that this year is just flying. And so the port cards are going home for most by the 23rd. I believe the high school is extended a few more days because of the numbers. To try to capture as best we can. So what are we working on? We're working on our planning for next year. And so as you already know, we've indicated in previous meetings that we will be reverting back to our 1920 schedule in terms of our six-hour day at the secondary and our start and end times. I know in that meeting, Carly shared some unknowns that we were still curious about regarding social distancing, mask wearing, et cetera. At this point today, on April 19, we think it's fair to say that we are anticipating the mask mandate to continue into the coming school year. So we want to put that out there now for families. And since we met last, the C D C changed their guidance for distancing in buildings. For now, you guys know we are, we follow the six-foot spacing. And we are looking to transition to the recommended three foot because right now we are exceeding that expectation with our six feet. So come the fall, we are anticipating the three-foot spacing and mask wear. And we know those are two really important factors to families. So we wanted to get that information out as soon as we could. So the reason we share that is because we need to ask our families what their platform selection is going to be for next school year in order to help us really cement our plans as best we can for the fall. So what that timeline looks like is that tomorrow, we have a communication ready to go out to our families indicating that we would like them to let us know if they would like either the Brandon Learn From Home experience or to participate in our Summit Virtual Academy for the '21, '22 school year. The deadline for that would be May 14. That is a Friday. And by having that on May 14, that still gives us a month or so with our own staff, our teaching staff here that can help us with our planning for the coming school year. And then it also gives us quite a bit of time as administrators to work on scheduling and all of the logistics that come along with that. So to help families in that decision-making, we did want to provide a community forum, a parent forum, where we'll not just talk about the Brandon Learn From Home experience for the coming school year, but also just talk about the learning experience for the coming school year. We know we have families that are anxious to come back in person, but there are some sticking points, such as mask wearing or distancing, et cetera. We want to give them a chance to question and answer with not just ourselves, but our building administrators as well. And Mr. Dave White will also have some information about Learn From Home for next year and what we anticipate that looking like as well. So those dates, it's a Tuesday, April 27. We will have an elementary meeting first and we will have a second, a second year one at 6:30. And those meetings will be reported via Zoom. So if any family member is not able to participate on those days, we will put those recordings up on our website. Those will be available to them all the way up until May 14. And of course, all of us are happy to answer any questions for any families between them as well.
Is that all virtual forum though anyway? I mean, is it virtual or is there going to be in-person?
It would be, it would be virtual.
It would be all virtual, recorded? So like you said, the parents can catch up later if they unable to attend? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. So and just know, if a family doesn't respond to the survey, because we know we have many families here in the district, it would be default to them to in-person instruction then for the fall. So if you are wanting, really seeking the Learn From Home experience or our Summit Virtual Academy, it's really, really important that we capture that information by May 14. So we really appreciate that for our own planning purposes. Any questions on that for us?
Yeah.
So I wasn't disrespectful in looking at my phone for Texas Jazz and at the calendar. That's in three weeks. As a parent, I don't feel comfortable with that amount of timeframe. Our school year's not even over with. And I feel that, I believe, at least in my house and my parents, like, you know, you have her in the June, I know June is way too, way too late. But kind of the end of May is what I just kind of thought in the back of my head right now. You have Memorial Day, we come back, we come back. Memorial Day is like the last, like, parrot. And then you're basically, you're done. Like we just, we go through the motions for like those few days in June, right? Like we're finishing things up, or gearing up, or doing graduation. We're kind of commencing the school year's over with. So I feel that as a parent, three weeks to me, 21 days. As a parent of two, I couldn't imagine if I had a parent of three or four or five or whatever, whatever school situations are in, where we're giving them enough time to make a huge decision, just because in the past, we have had parents that wanted to get in and they didn't have, they didn't have enough time to decide, that type of thing. So I would like us to visit the thought process of pushing that back a couple of weeks to around the end of May, just because it gives everyone a good enough time to talk to their spouses or guardians or whoever it is that's taking care of our children in the district, to truly sit down with their kids and talk about it. Sit down with, if there's anybody like Diane's team that needs to talk about with special needs, mental health, the whole gamut, and really give more than three weeks. Because I'll tell you, as a parent, I would not be able to make a decision for you in three weeks with my two. So that's just my personal opinion, but I just wanted to at least articulate that.
No, we. Thank you very much. I will tell you, we've been wrestling with the timeline on our end. We've had quite a few conversations about it here. And, you know, I think it's definitely open. We can have more and more dialogue. Just know that our driving factors, we're just trying to be cognizant of being fair to our staff and not just our teachers and the possible placements for the coming school year and ensuring that we had the right placements and the right people in the right, in the right places. But also what it takes to make it happen. Our high school counselors, our administrative staff. And those are, everything you brought up, those are very fair points. And we've definitely talked about those. And we appreciate you bringing them up. And we're happy to continue to have the conversation, have the conversation.
So how, so once a parent commits one way or another, we're locked in. Like this year, I know that, you know, everybody made a decision and then it was based on if, you know, they let people decide something different after first primary, I don't remember the whole timeline, first whatever semester, primary. And then, and then they were kind of locked in unless someone else backed out. So what does that look like?
Yeah, great. These are all conversations we're having right now. So one, in our conversation, we talked about semester being a key opportunity for families to make a change should they want to do so next school year. So obviously, our struggle too, Melissa, is that we know that other districts around us have already had their families make commitments. And Roxford had to make theirs, I think, several weeks ago. We're trying to be thoughtful and give our families more time and play it out a little bit longer while still giving us some grace to kind of make all the magic happen behind the scenes. We do recognize that things very well could change over the summer. We are not naive to that. We've lived, we've lived that life. And should circumstances change for a family, should something happen in which it really changes their particular choice, we will always be open and thoughtful to that. But it is really important for us in our own planning purposes as a whole, trying to get the collective majority, trying to understand where that falls. It's really beneficial to us to ensure that we're ready to go solid in the fall for when students return.
Sure.
So, but we are looking at a window of semester transition should a family want to make a change next year. That's what's currently being discussed.
Is that even feasible with staffing? I mean, is it something that is realistically feasible to be able to do?
And that's what we're discussing.
We think, we think so with the spacing. But it really is going to be dependent on the amount of students that we have in the virtual program. So to answer that question today, we're thinking about it. We're thinking about that question. But in reality, we really have to have a measurement of how many kids we have in Summit and Brandon Learn From Home. And the feasibility of that depends on that number. That's a great question, though.
And I'm assuming it's going to be the same at that point too. So if students decide to change that semester, they'll be going to go in for some upside from Brandon Learn From Home. They'll be going back to a school with a different teacher and a different classroom like this year.
That's right.
That's how we're experiencing.
Yeah, right. And one last thought, this kind of harkens back to a prior topic, I apologize. But the numbers, right? It's all about the numbers and allotted space. So do we have a feel for what our spacing does look like at a three-foot range? If we, dependent on the number that we may anticipate being in, continuing on, or being in for the first time next year, face to face? Do we have a feel for that?
Yeah, we do. We have a sense that with three feet spacing, in general, we can, we can go with average class sizes, which is, which is good to know across the board. Now, if those class sizes went up to a level that we couldn't do that, then that could be problematic for us.
Sure.
For getting students in maybe at semester time that want to transfer from virtual to in-person. But generally, we think we can make it work for an average class size.
Okay.
All right.
And that, and that might go into about class sizes in general and try to balance our scheduling matrix the best we can going into first semester in the fall and be mindful of our staffing to accommodate the class sizes that may not be over, over the mid-range. So all those elements, we got to put together and do something that makes sense.
For sure, for sure. It's just an often discussed topic, as, as we all know, this year. And therefore, we just want to go in with, with the authentic reality as to what it is, you know, as best one can.
Absolutely.
Because it's.
So do we, right?
Of course, everybody, yeah.
Trying to be thoughtful to that timeline again. And also been very fortunate that right now, people can collect if they want to go virtually. We've had the link live, we've had students already select to be either Learn From Home or Summit Virtual already. Mr. White's been very proactive. And in his weekly newsletter, that has been going out for a few weeks now. So we've already begun to capture some names of some students that want to be Learn From Home or participate in Summit. So we're going to continue that conversation and have that open. We can talk about the deadline of, of May 14th, the initial plan.
Right. And, you know, at the risk of ever suggesting everybody's not doing the absolute best they can and have a great plan in place, I would never, never suggest otherwise. However, toward Melissa's point, I, I think one of the pieces, almost regardless of when the time, the deadline is, but particularly if it stays where it is, is while there's the forum, you know, I'm sure there's conversations going on about what else can be done to ensure that families have full-on exchanges, communications, access, issue, spotter, you know, notices that go out, things that people won't even know to know, you know? That sort of, that sort of communication and publicity on it, for lack of a better word, so that it, that deadline is, the time during, before that deadline is that much more lively with engagement. So people have what they need at the end of the day, if we really need to respect that deadline. That's just one way of, it's not remedying the deadline, but it's a way of ensuring it's very full. And everybody feels they have access and information.
It's right there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so just to move back to testing it, I'm sorry, but that is our life in the spring. Starting May 3rd, we will be opening the window for our third graders, our fourth graders, our sixth graders and our seventh graders. And then in district, we do our end-of-year assessments and W E A. And those will open up the first week of May as well. So we will be testing for the big hair long stretch. So what are we looking for? So what are we looking for? Jan mentioned this earlier, you know, recognizing there are additional funding opportunities out there with the Astor Funds and also Twenty-three B. We've been thoughtful of the district, in what ways can we potentially access those funds to support our students? So, one program we're really excited to launch is the Kids Read Now program. And I know it was mentioned in a previous board meeting while I was recovering from my second COVID chat. But essentially, it is a program, we know that, we've heard about the summer slide, we've heard about summer reading, and have been promoting student summer reading. This is a research-based program that has multiple studies done in which our students here in Brandon, each student will receive in the mail eight books at not only their reading level, but their interest level, mailed to their homes once a week throughout the entire summer. And students will receive a catalog, much like this one, in fact, it could be this one. And it is color-coded with grade levels and topics, where they, along with their teacher, will select the books that they receive over the summer. So they're not just going to get any random book. They're going to get books, there's nonfiction, fiction, their favorite characters, some new characters. There's some really fantastic books of all different walks of life in here that students can select. What will happen is, these books will be selected alongside the teacher, the student, and the teacher will do it together. Families will then get this information, this is the really cool part. There is an app for families to participate. This nonprofit company reaches up to the family weekly, reminding them of their new book coming, tells them, you know, did you read your new book? What was it, you know, kind of just promoting it, so there's that frequent communication happening from the company. Each book, and I apologize, I left it in my office, comes with a sticker on the inside that has prompt questions a parent can ask the student as they're reading the book. So they're often text-to-self, you know, different connections, text-to-text, text-to-real-life. And so they can engage in dialogue about the book the student is reading, there's some comprehension question there as well. And so by promoting this, we feel it, this really complements our early literacy program for our students in grades K-2, so that they can be success, these would be exiting K-2 students right now, so they will be successful and help them when they get into third grade, because we know we have the read by grade three requirement. So very excited. In addition to all of those things, our teachers are amazing, they're already coming up with ideas that they can stay engaged with their students over the summer, so they can share what books the kids are reading with each other, whether it be on Zoom or whatever it may be. So, we anticipate like a Facebook feed of students sharing the books that they're reading, and really having it be a really great lot of community energy over our students reading over the summer. So I'm super excited about that. All students exiting K-2. Very cool. So Camp Learn, we're launching, this is a targeted camp opportunity for our students that we are noticing through our data points that need some additional support. So this is a program that's going to be running in August with our Brandon teachers and our Brandon literacy coaches. And this year, we're adding mathematics to it as well. Traditionally, it's only been based with literacy, and we are including mathematics. We've expanded the day a little bit, so it's going to be from nine to one, so we have more time to make sure we can fit in some math and some fun at the same time. Luckily, we can partner up with our Meetup, EDA. I always say it the wrong way around, I think I got it, Meetup, EDA. So our students will be able to get breakfast and lunch by participating in this program. And some really exciting transportation will be provided, all those good things.
Can I?
Oh, yes.
Kids Read Now.
Yes.
If I understand that that's done with their current teacher, correct? Or is it, is their current teacher sits, because the parents are signing up for this right now, hopefully, or by the end of the school year? And pretty much, the interaction's going to be all virtual in the summer, and it's going to be from home, hopefully, parent encouragement, plus if they get the app and the teachers.
Yeah.
So they, they have eight weeks to read, and then it would be great to go start on August third, and that would be in-person and, and/or virtual? Or how's the three-week program?
Thank you for asking that question, I did not include it, so it's in-person.
Okay, that would be in-person.
That, that, that program is in-person. The books that the students will get to select, they're actually going to select, fingers crossed, by the end of this week.
Oh, perfect.
So that they can be ready, they will get their first book before school event.
Awesome.
In the mail, and then they will get a book each week thereafter. And then they get a blank book with a bunch of pictures, and the kids get to write a story about the pictures that they see. So they get to incorporate some writing as well.
So what's really great is when the parents want to take the kids on that family trip in the car, they will have, if they wait till week two, there'll be two books minimum to read, and it'll be something as you sit around the campfire, or out on the beach, or whatever, that you could talk about.
Yeah.
And it'd be great, like I say, for the, get those kids reading.
And if the child is going to grandma's house, they will get communication from this company here in the next few weeks verifying their address. So should they be going to grandma's for the summer, they can change the address to make sure they go to grandma.
Wow.
So it's really a unique program.
That's so cool.
Many districts around us have utilized it in years past. I'm excited to have, to add Brandon to the list. I think it's going to be really energizing for our community over the summer. Kids are going to have lots of really fun books they can read on their own. Not all of us parents are letters, I was a math and science teacher, so otherwise a teacher, I didn't teach reading. And, and so not all of us have the skills to teach reading, so they'll have access to books that the students will be able to work on on their own, so we're super, super excited about that.
And, and one more question.
Yeah, yeah.
Every one of our kindergarten's first and second graders, they can be part of this, there is no cutoff.
They're all getting it.
Everybody's getting it, so there's no reason to not do this.
But we, we, we opted everybody in. Everybody exiting K-2.
Okay, perfect. Does everybody want to see the expression on my high schooler's face, is what I suggest we participate in? I'll take, I'll take pictures.
That's what I was just saying. Every program, it only goes three, three, but I'm thinking, I mean, this is really fun.
It is awesome, it's incredible, I love it, I'm so excited. I'm so excited.
This is like perfect.
Good stuff. So, some other summer activities we've got going on is the, the Open Youth Innovation Camp. We do have a cohort of students from Brandon participating in this class. So we're excited, it will be at Kirk Clarkson High School, and actually, that starts actually in May. We are utilizing those Twenty-three B funds, we did apply for that for credit recovery purposes. And so we will be running an in-person and virtual credit recovery program this summer for students in grades nine, twelve. We, it is our plan at this time to have those ELA and mathematics available in person as well as online, so should have been read. We're going to, you know, recommend they do those classes in person, but if they're not able to, for whatever reason, the virtual option will be available. We will have a computer lab open here in the district, as we have in years past, for all of our content areas, so it will be staffed by our Brandon staff. The At-Risk counselor that was brought on last board meeting will be running this program for us at the high school, so he'll be overseeing the students that are participating, it makes sense. He's our At-Risk counselor, he'll be working with our students that are currently behind in credit. So we're very excited about that. That information will be coming out in the next couple of weeks, everything is getting finalized at this time. So very excited about that, you can anticipate, the Fourth of July holiday is always funky in there with the timing.
Yeah.
So it's very likely that we're going to launch that program, that the first week after school gets out for three weeks, with a week off during the Fourth of July break. But there's always that virtual option as well for those that are not able to participate in person, have a day in the morning. And again, students virtually can house at Brandon Middle School, and they'll be able to get access again to free breakfast and free lunch for those that participate. So trying to be strategic about the resources that we have to best serve our students. And then we're not done yet, we're not done coming up with some summer programs, because it's just, we're constantly evolving with COVID times and trying to make it all work. So some things you can see that have happened historically through community ed, and I don't want to take Jan's thunder, I know there's the GRASS program that we've done historically for students K-8. That's going to continue, Camp Hawk will be available, with some users and vendors and such as well. And another big summer tutoring available, because a lot through community ed. So we're looking forward to getting all of those pieces finalized, we feel we're a little behind just because of all the COVID stuff, and trying to figure out what can we run, what can't we run? And everybody feels that same way across the county. Pretty excited to be able to present these items for you this evening, knowing that we know we have more to come, and that you can look forward to seeing those in the next two weeks as well.
Yeah, we're working on adding, there'll be several camps, so we're just kind of working on that, there'll be science and Bible doing, COVID camp, which is more popular, so more to come on that. We're working challenging, I don't know if it's going to go.
Oh, it's
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some science and STEM-type things, so a lot likes this.
Yeah. Fingers crossed, we, we applied for Twenty-three B funds for those, we'll see if, if those are approved, if those are innovative and STEM-based.
We hope so, then we wouldn't have to charge. In the past, we've charged, well, it's community ed, we've charged tuition for those camps, but if we get, if we get to the Twenty-three B money, we'll be able to offer that. No cost. That would be great.
Keep it posted on that.
Amazing.
And then lastly, just my last slide is kindergarten enrollment is open. We, we're looking, we're excited, we keep, we keep looking at how many kindergartners, we're looking forward to happening next year. And just to remind you all, families, that now is the time to get them enrolled, so. That's me with what I'm seeing.
Fantastic, everything that you listed, you're, it was just packed, from one exciting thing to the next. It's, I know there's still so many conversations going on, as you said, and so many things to figure out, but as, as that is the platform, it's amazing.
Yeah.
Absolutely amazing, thank you to you and the team, everybody, for the hard work on that. Because figuring it out in a, a more routine summer is, is a full plate enough, but figuring it out now, that much more difficult. So thank you, thank you to everybody who's involved with that. Does anybody have any questions of Carly or comments?
Just real quick on kindergarten enrollment, so I know the open houses are kind of pushed back a little later than normal, right? So will, after a parent enrolls, will they get an email for their homeschool saying what matters?
Yes.
Great.
And anybody that's already in preschool, they've already enrolled, it's just maybe a little over time. And they feel that way, in summer, when they are posted.
I just have one question I thought of, perhaps I'm just not in that space anymore, but what do we have going out for enrollment, branding and cultivating all of our younger families?
Yeah, well, we have social media ads going out, so we, we've had some opportunities by email, letter. We've also had a postcard that went out last week. We have one more specific for kindergarten and preschool going out first week in May. So, you got one postcard in the mail, you're probably going to get another one here in a few weeks, talking specifically about kindergarten enrollment. So, some marketing, some branding for this currently, we're at a hundred and fifty-seven kindergartners for next year, that includes J.K. Where, this, this card, here we had a hundred and eighty-five, so we're about on the mark where we were last year at this time.
Okay. Very good. Very good, okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to touch base. Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to circle back, I sent on your presentation, you said that you wanted to send an email out, you wanted to send an email out tomorrow. I'm assuming that you guys are going to go back to the drawing board and, or is that email going out tomorrow? Or are you going back to the drawing board to figure out that point that we brought up?
I think we're going to go back to the drawing board to talk about it, but we still might get it out by the end of the day, so.
I just wanted to be on the lookout for my email. Thank you.
Yeah, sure, no worries.
Okay, very good, thank you, Carly, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. All right. Now we're moving on to our action items on our agenda. And the first item that we have is contract approval for the Brandon Administrators Association. May I have a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the VAA contract as presented.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokaski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Our next action item is contract approval, central office staff and maintenance staff. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve central office staff and maintenance staff contracts as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokaski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is the approval of the DM Burr contract extension. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the DM Burr contract extension as presented.
Support. Any discussion? All right, may I have a roll call?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokaski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have our approval of the Extended COVID-nineteen Continuity of Learning Plan. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the Extended COVID-nineteen Continuity Plan as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokaski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Okay, our next item is the approval of the BHs Spanish Class Overnight Trip. So, go ahead.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approved the high school Spanish class overnight trip to Chicago, March tenth through the eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, as presented.
Support. All right, and, or part of our discussion. We're a guest speaker, so exciting.
Hi, my name's Lori Moreno, I was going to put a Spanish teacher at the high school. Thank you for letting me come tonight. We have been, we were set last year, we had a Puerto Rico trip planned for June of twenty-twenty, and it was canceled due to COVID, and we opted not to reschedule because we weren't sure how long COVID would last, and we didn't want our families having so much may tie up in the company, so we put that on the back burner. I've got groups of students now who were signed up to this Puerto Rico trip, and they were just, they're just so motivated and excited, and they love learning, they love culture. And I wanted to offer them something, but an Orisys trip at this point just didn't seem feasible until we got a better handle on COVID. So I did some research, and in Chicago, there seems to be quite a few things that would fit what we're doing in class and just support our cultural studies. I don't know, did you all get a itinerary in your city public access? So there's some dining, some dancing, some art museums. Wilson Village, I'd never even heard of before, that bookhouse on Mango Street, if you're familiar with that. Some of the younger grades will read excerpts from it. I know Mr. Martin in his AP English class, that's an option, and I'd even looked at possibly seeing if we could do that book in Spanish for nature as well. But they have murals where they'll go through and talk you through them, and there's a little Mexican art museum in Village, so it just would provide kids with two days, it would be one night, with just something to look forward to. I picked March because it's after the holidays and snow days and before all the crazy testing and seniors leave, so it seemed like a good time. And we do a project with my Spanish core class, they, they research and present on artists from the Spanish-speaking world, so this would fall after they've done their research, so I thought it would be more meaningful then. I'm presenting to you now instead of in the fall, because I am cognizant that for some families, they want students to be able to participate, but it is, it's about a five-hundred-dollar trip. And this would allow families to enroll and have monthly payments of about sixty dollars a month, so that would be more doable than hitting them in September with the larger sum. I talked with Jan a little bit, too. One of the things we're obviously looking at would be security with making this kind of an investment. If, you know, COVID got worse, for some reason, the district didn't feel it was safe for students to go, so there is a thirty-six-dollar protection fee that we're rolling into the cost that everybody will just pay. If for any reason, the district, the board, the Spanish teachers, individual parents, anybody feels that this is, you know, something that isn't safe for what not the absolute most, anybody's going to lose thirty-six dollars, that's at the day before, I mean, they get right up until we leave, so. Yeah, so I felt like, I mean, we, you got your money, you got two girls, but you got your money back, but it was like ten weeks of me just. And they learned a lot too. These travel companies have learned a lot too, that they obviously want to keep their businesses going, be rep. Well, Girl Strides is the provider for this trip, and they do the DC trip, and Puerto Rico trip, and the choir trip. So they, they've really been a good provider for us. That's what I'm asking. I'm asking for approval to be able to offer this trip to students. It would be students in Spanish 3, 4, and 5 initially, and then I just need to kind of gauge the numbers and depending on if we need to fill a bus, we could open it up to Spanish twos, or maybe we have so many 3s, 4s, and 5s, that we have a second bus, and then we could take, you know, fill that bus and get two groups of students.
Great idea.
You have any questions for me?
I'm excited to see it. Excited to see a trip.
Thank you for finding a solution, an opportunity for them, and being so considerate about it, and really just doing something that's doable and, you know, just thank you for that.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. It was good. Really appreciate the information you're coming in to share with us about it. And appreciate all your efforts every year, because I know, I know you were, you were sweating it like a straight. It was tough. It was tough, I know. And so thank you for caring so much. I appreciate it. Does anybody have any other question or comment on this topic? All right, it looks like we're ready for a roll call vote, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zofe?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item is the school bond loan fund ref- Let me start over. School bond loan fund refunding resolution.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the school bond loan fund refunding resolution as presented.
Support. Any discussion on this item? All right, roll call.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zofe?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, our line item is approval of Kids Read Now.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve Kids Read Now as presented.
Support. Any discussion? No. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zofe?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Our next line item is approval of request for proposal for Harvey Swanson septic field.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the issuing of a request for proposal for a new septic field at Harvey Swanson. This field will replace the existing field number three as presented.
Okay. Any discussion? Anybody have any questions on this line item or?
And this was mostly discussed last month, correct?
Yeah, it's the additional last field.
So it's the adding of the other one.
Yes, it's the adding, and it's the one by the bar dining.
And we are waiting for approval from the county. So once we get that, we'll issue their appeal. We're hoping it's sooner rather than later. Mark's been talking to them. We may not issue this immediately.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Without further discussion, may I have a roll call?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zofe?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes.
Our next line item is our Oakland County Road Commission lawsuit resolution of claims.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve settlement of Oakland County Road Commission lawsuit as presented.
May I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? Has to do with the roundabout area, right? It has to do with the roundabout whereby many years ago, apparently, the district did own a piece of property. In the county's efforts to acquire all the bits of, pieces of property it takes to create this traffic pattern, they brought a complaint, basically, you know, to quiet title in essence. Make sure everybody who has a say in any of those pieces is good, good to go. And with that, we, even though it's been some time, the school district's name came up in the title search, along with many others, I'm sure, and therefore was brought into this suit. I mean, we're not being sued for anything, as much as we're just trying to have our word be heard, express our interest in this property if we actually had one. We're assured by our council, after also conducting, you know, analyzing the title, that we do not have an interest. So by moving forward, signing this consent, we are removing ourselves from the case. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zofe?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Okay, now move on to citizens' input.
I'm good.
You're good? All right. Yes, please. Thank you.
We do not have any comments?
Thank you. All right, and with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.